All right, Jesse, you ready? All right, good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, June 11th, 2020, 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. As always, we start with a pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Hornby, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. And for the record, let's see, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, all seven council members with us this evening. It's been a while since we've all been in the same room, I think, because we've had folks calling in. So, nice to see you all this evening. The first item on our agenda would be the consent items, which includes approval of this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings.
And I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings.
A motion by Councilmember Huffaker and a second by Councilmember Bailey to approve our consent items, including the agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from our previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. So, normally in our agendas, although not COVID-related agendas, we have time for some public comment. Dave, are you on the phone? I don't hear him. I will check in a little bit later and see if Mr. Riggs would like to have a comment. So, we will start with our action items. So, the first couple are regarding some art. So, David, we'll give you, I guess, three items. Yeah. Two arts and a bid award.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. And I do have the first three items here tonight. The first one is an art display agreement. This one, we've been working on for about the last year with the PUD. So, we own a number of art pieces in the city collection, and a good portion of those are, no, not a good portion, but a chunk of those are contained down on PUD property down along the river. And we maintain those and thought it would be a good idea to have something formal in place to say that it's okay for us to have that artwork displayed on their property and just kind of define expectations. So, we put together this agreement. It's very similar to one that PUD had with Art on the Avenues for their artwork. And so, at this point, it's been reviewed by the city attorney, and we're recommending it for approval.
To be honest, I didn't know that was our art. I thought it was theirs.
Yeah, it's a mix now at this point, because PUD actually acquired some of the artwork from Art on the Avenues. We own some of it, and then some of it is in the visiting collection, which is in the next, part of it's in the next agenda item.
Got it. Any questions for David? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for location, care, and maintenance of art with the Shalane County PUD.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve the agreement for location, care, and maintenance of art with the Shalane County PUD. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
A donation of art.
Yeah, so, back in December 2018, we acquired several pieces of artwork from Art on the Avenues, but that left their visiting collection. So, these are the pieces that, at that time, there were seventeen, that every two years, Art on the Avenues would solicit art from the artists. They'd put them on display. They would sell what they could and then replace them every two years. Art on the Avenues is going kind of out of the art business at this point, with the exception of the Beauty of Bronze program, and they're dissolving. And so, we've been working with them for the last year or so on helping them to try to sell the artwork, or then whatever didn't sell, have that donated to the city. And so, we've got four pieces that are currently, two of them are downtown, two of them are on the, sort of on the loop trail near the pedestrian bridge, that Art on the Avenues would be donating to the city. Those sculptures are Adoration, Big Bite, River Run, and Playful Octopus. And so, we are requesting approval of this, so we can add those to our collection. There are two additional sculptures that we're still kind of working through some of the details on that may come forward hopefully by the end of the month. And this one has been reviewed by both the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee.
So, Dave, does this add to our responsibility of things to do, of keep on and cleaning? And so, is there an expense to maintain them?
No, because we already maintain them.
Okay.
Yep. The only expense that we'll have is we'll want to have them appraised the next time we go out to do the full appraisal, and then we're going to replace the plaques, the little name plaques on them, to update those. And we're doing that on all the sculptures, too, so.
To show that we have the ownership.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm just sorry to hear that Art on the Avenues is making this transition. They've long been a force in community vetterment.
We hope to carry on at least the sculpture portion of that tradition. And I know they're partnering with the museum on the Beauty of Bronze program to keep that one going.
And everyone that comes to town for conferences and conventions, when they've talked to me, I said, wow, what, you know, serendipitous walking, and here's a piece of art.
That's been a great program. Dave, we're acquiring these four pieces. I assume that the artists are, they're not being purchased, they're the artists themselves.
Art on the Avenues, I think, purchased some of them from the artist. And so, then, with money that they've had, and so then, those are then, so then, Art on the Avenues is donating to us. And then, the other ones, the artists are donating also. Yep, kind of a mixture.
Would the artists have the option of taking that?
No, not, once we accept ownership of them, then we're done. We have donation agreements stating that, too.
Any questions for Dave? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve the acceptance of the donation of sculptures from Art on the Avenues.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve the acceptance of the donation of sculptures from Art on the Avenues. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. And Hale Park, David?
Yeah, this one gets us to the finish line. So, for the benefit of the new council members, I put in some of the history of the park, so you can see kind of the context of it. So, this evening, we're actually asking for a motion to allow the mayor to sign the construction contract with Smith Excavation to finish this up. So, this phase of the project would, well, the total phase include adding the skate park, picnic shelter, restrooms, play equipment, landscaping, some additional security cameras, and a trail extension in the park. Skate park was done last year, we finished that. So, this wraps up all those other elements. Earlier this year, we went through a competitive bid process, and Smith came in at the low bid, and that's within our estimated construction budget, which was pretty cool. This agreement was reviewed by the Finance Committee, Public Works Committee, and is recommended for approval by the, both the project engineers, who's our Pacific Engineering and staff. And then, with your approval tonight, and we get, once we get a notice to proceed by both the state and the National Park Service, because this is funded predominantly by state and federal grants, we're hoping to get this out for construction and completed by this fall.
So, much interruption of the other parks while this is under construction, or will the dog park and the skate park be open the whole time?
Skate park will be closed. And actually, one of the things that we're looking at doing is we're going to have Grine Line come back out and restain the apple during this time, because it's faded a little bit.
Okay.
But pretty much the area from the pedestrian bridge north to the parking lot, with the exception of the loop trail, will be closed during construction, because we'll be doing work all the way around the skate park.
Okay, and that includes landscaping and lights and all that stuff?
Yeah, landscaping lights, sod, and then, the trail will still be open, but will have construction periods, too. Dog park will still remain open also.
So, a ninety-day construction window or something?
Yeah, more or less.
And Dave, the new cameras is that to cover the play area and the new shelters, so that we have eyes on that area?
Yeah, we're going to have two, we have it designed for two separate spots. So, we'll have a, right now, we have a set down by the off-leash area to kind of cover that side of the bridge. This will have a set by the skate park. So, you'll be able to see skate park and then kind of the main part of the park, as well as the play area. And then, another set down closer to where the restroom, if you can envision the park, so near the parking area. So, we'll be able to see the parking area, the restroom, outside of the restroom, and the picnic shelter. So, because it's such a long linear park, it's hard to get good coverage with just two sets, so we'll have three in there.
And we definitely need eyes in that area.
Yeah.
Any other questions for David? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a standard construction agreement with Smith Excavation, the amount of $607,479.57 for the construction of Hale Park Phase Two project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to authorize the mayor to sign a standard construction agreement with Smith Excavation, the amount of $607,479.57 for the construction of the Hale Park Phase Two project. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Laura, we're going to put a couple of people on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or reappointments. Okay. I'll just tell all three of them that you don't want them on that lodging tax.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So, yes, the item is for three, two reappointments and one new appointment. So, on May 20, LTAC held their regular meeting and recommended these three appointments. The first one is to reappoint Darcy Christopherson, to reappoint Linda Haglund, and then, there was a new motion for a vacant position to appoint Leslie Freitag, the Executive Director of Pibus Public Market. These are all two-year appointments, so they'll be valid through December 31, 2021. That's about it.
And we can probably do this in one motion, if everyone's okay with it. I think we can just.
Yes, yeah. Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the council pass Resolutions Number 2020-17, appointing Leslie Freitag, Resolution 2020-18, appointing Darcy Christopherson, and Resolution 2020-19, reappointing Linda Haglund to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolutions 2020-17, appointing Leslie Freitag, Resolution 2020-18, appointing Darcy Christopherson, and Resolution Number 2020-19, reappointing Linda Haglund to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries, and we'll note one abstention.
Frank?
Yes?
Frank, this is Dave Riggs.
Hi, Dave.
Calling in.
Why don't you give us, yeah, why don't you give us a couple of more minutes, and then I'll get to you?
Sure.
All right, thanks, Dave.
Don't worry.
Laura, adoption of Resolution 2020 regarding outdoor seating.
Yep, so, this is an extension of the demonstration project for the private use of public space that expired in 2019. This resolution extends it to the end of the year. This will allow us to go ahead and hopefully finalize the code revision that's been ongoing for some time. Luckily, before Steve King left, he actually did provide us a draft of what the code should look like, so we are looking at that, as well as, we are now meeting monthly with the Wenatchee Downtown Association to kind of talk through with them any questions that they have or any suggestions that they may have. So, we do intend to have a final code revision to the council by the end of the year. But again, since this expired in 2019, we wanted to extend it, especially right now with COVID, so this would allow for outdoor dining. We're also allowing some flexibility in terms of outdoor displays for merchandisers. A lot of them are, because of, again, COVID, some customers prefer to shop outside or stay outside, or it's a way to be able to expand their footprint. So, as long as they keep the five-foot pedestrian space clear, we're allowing them to use some of their building or the right-of-way frontage near their buildings to allow for clothing racks or customer staging areas.
Invalid selection.
And we'll kind of just do that on a case-by-case basis. But so, that's what the resolution does, it extends it through the end of the year with the intent to bring something back to you all by the end of the year to finalize our recommendations.
So, at this point, this just continues on what's already taken place in downtown. Excellent. Any questions for Laura? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I made a motion to the council to pass Resolution 2020-16, extending the demonstration project for the private use of public spaces through December 31, 2020, or adoption of a new city code that addresses said use, whichever occurs earlier.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolution 2020-16 to extend the demonstration project for the private use of public spaces through December 31, 2020, or adoption of a new city code that addresses said use, whichever occurs earlier. Any discussion?
Laura, is there any subject, at this point, any subject, changes to what $100 of the demonstration code, the event operating, or the third?
Been a while.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of, just that extra little piece about the outdoor merchandising, which, you know, I think has kind of been allowed flexibly in the past. I know Firehouse Pet does that, but we're kind of letting other folks know that they can take advantage of that. And then, I think it's a good opportunity to see who's going to take advantage of that, how they'd like to do it, and then, that would expire at the end of the year. And so, if it's successful, great, then we'll work something through to, into the final code. If it's not successful, or if there's lessons learned, then that's, again, the opportunity to not only help the businesses, but try to see how it works.
But then, yes, clarify something to you. Originally, the code we adopted, pretty specifically dealing with parklets, was it broader than that? You're adding on to this, you're broadening this?
She will be with the next ordinance.
With the next ordinance?
Yeah.
Right, right.
This one just reaffirms the one we've had before. I think what's happened is people have started to use sandwich boards and other sort of, you know, we know which stores they are. I don't technically think there's a permit or use for that, we just sort of allowed it to happen. So, I think when we get to a final code, there'll be some rules associated with doing that.
And the parklets are, they're under a separate resolution right now, if I remember right.
Yeah, which is this one, which expired, because it was a temporary.
But I thought there was one for sidewalks and one for parklets that were separate.
I think they're the same.
Yeah, I think they're the same as well. I went back and did a search.
I just remember we had to have some sort of ability to look and make sure they were done nicely, and so, McGlynn's came in, and we approved that one. We didn't want it to look awful, and so, I think, for the most part, that's, it was a temporary, doesn't work, and I think it's been working, I wish more would do it, but...
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead, Rob.
We're here, so, we had an interim ordinance that expired, and we renewed it in eighteen to run all the way through the end of nineteen. That one expired in nineteen, it was a G. To be nimble here, we want to get this in place, so we can have our businesses have this outdoor seating, so we said, let's get this back in place for twenty. We'll continue to work with the WDA, try to bring back permanent ordinance or resolution that is here. But it's continuing with the parklets, if somebody wants to do that, I've talked to a couple owners about that. The big emphasis has been right now is outdoor seating. We want to be able to allow, if somebody, if Ramona comes in tomorrow and says, I want outdoor seating, I want to be able to serve alcohol, we want to be able to act quickly and give them that sidewalk cafe permit, so they can do that. That's why we're...
Okay. I just, I just didn't see parklets addressed in this one, so I kept thinking, oh, there's still separate issues, so. I know there was some things in here that mentioned about gas heaters and things like that, and I was kind of curious if that's allowed in the parklet, but it's not allowed on the sidewalk?
I don't know the answer to that question.
My knowledge, it's not allowed on the sidewalk.
But what about in the parklet?
We haven't had any proposed, I don't, do they have them at McGlynn's? Do they have, you have a concern that...
Just that we're consistent with our code. You know, if we think that it's okay for them to have them, and they're using them in a safe manner, then we need to allow it and not specifically say they can't have them. I can see where having them on the sidewalk, where people are walking by and might bump them, that that could be a problem. So, it seems to me like in our final code, maybe we should address that separately.
Sure.
Or, you know, so if it's a parklet and it's done in this manner, then it's okay, but if it's, and I think there's also something to do with electricity and...
I think there was design guidelines or sort of design parameters for the parklets when this was first introduced.
So, again, that's why I kept thinking, oh, it's separate issue, so we don't need to worry about it.
Gotcha. But I will take a look at those and to understand what that means, but, so I apologize, I don't have that background, but there is a set parameters, and there's a whole process about how to permit it, what's required, if you want to make modifications, what you're allowed to do, what you're not allowed to do. So, that would be part of, like Rob said, the new resolution that we would recommend, based off of what we've seen.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, so we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
And I hope, I know we've had some discussions with the downtown folks about perhaps closing Wenatchee Avenue a time or two to allow for some more outdoor seating that got, didn't go over very well. So, I think at this point, we'll be looking at this ordinance and maybe some sidewalk seating and those sorts of things. So, there wasn't quite the acceptance I thought there would be for some closures of downtown streets from time to time, so. Anyhow, we'll see, obviously, we've got a soft opening going on right now at Phase 1.92, or whatever we're at, and so, we've got some folks out doing some of those things even as we speak, so it'll be interesting to see, as we transition through that, what that might look like. So, Mr. Riggs is on the phone and would like to address the council, so I'm going to allow him three minutes under our public comments. So, Dave, are you with us?
I am still here.
And I did hand out what you gave me on the doorsteps of City Hall, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers and mayor, I'm Dave Riggs, lived in Wenatchee since 1989, and I'm a retired Wenatchee school teacher. I just, my intent is mainly to introduce to the council a statement from Wenatchee, or, excuse me, from Spokane, elected leaders on the presence of armed vigilantes during the protests. I quote from their statement. "We, as elected leaders from the Spokane community, declare that we oppose the presence of armed vigilantes roaming the streets of our city. The past two weekends during and after protests in downtown Spokane sparked by the murder of George Boyd and others, armed vigilantes were observed individually and in groups around downtown Spokane. Their presence did not contribute positively in any way to the protests. In fact, their presence made the situation more tense and our city more dangerous for all involved. We strongly condemn the presence of armed vigilantes and find their actions contrary to the values of our community. The tactics used to intimidate and put fear in the citizenry, businesses, and people peacefully protesting against personal and systematic racism and promoting justice have no place in our city." And I'd like to add that this was signed by not only seven members of the council, the mayor, two state representatives, a senator, the county auditor, and four school board members. And all I would ask of the council and the mayor is to consider doing the same kind of public statement, basically condemning the actions of these vigilantes. I don't think having armed people injecting themselves in the middle of a peaceful protest is in the best interest of this city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dave, and we'll take that under consideration. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right, budget amendment. Mr. Poseck, Jack?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Brad Poseck, Jack, Finance Director. Couple items for you tonight. One, the first one is amendment to the 2020 budget. We do these twice a year. We do one in the spring, and then we'll do our final budget amendment in the fall. And so, there's several budget amendments that have all been discussed at Finance Committee and approved at Finance Committee. There's actually a couple that even reduce our budget, because they were items that were completed in 2019. They were built into the 2020 budget, but no longer needed. I guess if you have any questions for me, otherwise, I would recommend that council adopt Ordinance 2020-14.
As you can tell by some of these, we did some of them early on in the year prior to COVID, not that I would have done any of them any differently, I don't think I would have, but, and then, we just got some other adjustments. As Brad mentioned at Finance today, I think last year, when we did our first budget amendment, there was probably forty items on there, because we had money and we were doing the projects, and so, it's a little bit different this year. In fact, the Finance Committee today took maybe a dozen or so projects off the construction list for this year, not that it was, any of them were major, it was sort of like, well, those probably aren't going to get done anyhow, and it's sort of weighed on a little bit just to see how, as we sort of work our way through this. So, yeah, so this is our one of two budget amendments, and there'll be another one probably in November or December, when we do the final one. It's always nice to keep the auditors happy. So, if no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2020-14, amending the 2020 budget as adopted by Ordinance 2019-39, revoking, recalling, or decreasing all or a portion of total appropriations provided for entering findings that this ordinance is the best, is in the best interest of the city, and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to approve Ordinance 2020-14, amending the 2020 budget as adopted by Ordinance 2019-39, revoking, recalling, or amending, or, excuse me, or decreasing all or a portion of the total appropriations provided for entering findings that the ordinance is in the best interest of the city, and requiring that this ordinance be approved by a majority plus one of the entire council. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. For the record, all seven, yes. And CARES Act with Commerce Contract.
Yes, so, as you're all aware, earlier this year, the federal government adopted the CARES Act, which provides financial relief across many spectrums. The CARES funding that is available to us is actually being passed through this, through Washington State, and they, Washington State has allocated just over a million, $1,039,500 to the city of Wenatchee. These funds can be used to cover medical expenses, public health expenses, payroll expenses, actions to facilitate compliance with COVID-19, and expenses associated with economic support, and any other reasonable COVID-19-related expenses. So, as they say, they include that the funds are very broad and flexible, we just have to be able to document that we had expenses... We just have to be able to document that we had expenses that were related to COVID-19. At this point in time, the city is currently, currently looking at how we would use these funds. And it appears that we'll probably end up having about seven hundred and fifty thousand of this million. Seven hundred and fifty thousand can be used to reimburse some of our, our payroll costs that were incurred because we chose not to furlough staff and instead paid staff. So we could get up to probably close to seven hundred and fifty thousand reimbursed for that. And of that balance, we, our facilities crews have been installing Plexiglas protective barriers at our front counters, at our customer counters here at City Hall and out at the PSC. I think between staff time and materials for those, I understand it'll be around forty thousand dollars for those. And then we're, we've got all sorts of other COVID supplies like masks and hand sanitizer. I think there's some laptops for people being able to work from home. Those costs will probably come in around sixty thousand. And after, after those costs, we'll probably have about a couple hundred thousand that we had hoped to be used for assistance for homelessness. But it sounds like trying to document that has, because community development has been looking into that. And it sounds like trying to document that as COVID related is proving to be difficult. So they're going to reach out to the Housing Authority and the Community Foundation to see if there's other ways that, that remaining, those remaining funds can be used in the community. From here, if council directs the mayor to sign the contract, from here, we send it back to Commerce. Commerce will then sign the contract as well. And once we have a signed contract, we'll submit the first reimbursement request. It'll probably be for some of the payroll costs, just to, just to get the process going, get some reimbursement coming. And it's my understanding that that will take them about a week to process that. So it sounds like the turnaround is pretty quick.
Just to be clear though, so before we submit this request, we have to specifically specify what these monies are going to be spent on?
We have to specify what, yes, we do have to specify.
So, so it's a reimbursable grant?
Right. I understand what it is. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on what needed to be done. Because what I was hoping for is that the Finance Committee could actually meet and discuss where these funds should be spent on.
So we did talk about it. I think I mentioned last time we met at council that we'd be doing this in the Finance Committee. So I think what, at least the direction I thought we had was, you know, we spent a bunch of money on payroll for people to stay home out of safety and that that money would come back to the city. I think our job is to make sure our city funds are, are, are good. That's roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand of that. So, and then we've spent a hundred thousand or so here on stuff. So that gets us to eight fifty. So there's roughly a couple hundred thousand dollars that are left that we can do something with. And I think the Finance Committee talked today about what that might look like. Once the money's back and we get it back and it gets back into all of those funds that we have, some will go back to utility funds, some will go to streets, some will come to general fund, that money. And it's in your general fund to be spent any way that the council wants to spend their general fund dollars, right? So, but we do think we're going to have a couple million dollars less than sales tax. So again, you certainly always have the ability within your general fund to do that as it comes back. It's that couple hundred thousand dollars in my mind that is still sort of left to be spent. We don't want to leave any of it not spent. We have till October to spend it. And so what we talked about at Finance today a little bit was, do you rush out and spend it tomorrow? Or wouldn't you be glad if you had a couple hundred thousand dollars maybe in August or September if something else happens, right? If there's COVID too or some other event takes place and you go, ah, here's the right spot for the last two hundred thousand. Maybe it's something within the city. Maybe it goes to the port and gets into small business hands. Sounds like housing's a tough issue. Maybe something magically appears. So I'm, I'm sort of thinking that might be the right role as we sort of wait. The intention is to spend it. And so I don't think we're doing anything wrong here in terms of where it's going or why, how it's getting back to us. I think the first eight fifty to me is what I would be recommending we do. And then we can play with the last two hundred sort of later. But it, some of it ends up back in your general fund, right? I don't know if it's two hundred, two hundred and fifty grand. Will end up back in your general fund.
I, I guess what I was hoping for a little bit is we have a lot of businesses in Wenatchee that are, they're hurting. A lot of them have made the decision already to close. And I'd like to see if some of these monies couldn't be used to help out our hurting business owners. So I know, I know there's a provision in here that says that's allowed.
Yeah. So we could, yep, we could spend every bit of it on that. You could spend all million dollars and thirty-nine thousand on that if you want. The issue to me gets to, we got to develop a program, right? And then we got to go out and figure out who gets it and who doesn't get it. And then we go out and we distribute that. We could take the money, give it to the port because the port already had a thousand applications. And I think they've been able to fund, I don't know if it's been a hundred of them or so because they did some with the governor's money. And then they took some of the county, oh, nine dollars. We gave them some CDBG money or are giving them some CDBG money. So that money's going to the port because they have this list of businesses and that money's getting out. So to me, it would be, okay, if it, if you decide this business is the two hundred thousand and then we're sort of done? Or do you take the whole million and say, port, here's a million? Or do you say, no, we'll take the million and the city will decide and we'll take application? And so to me, it's sort of process. I, I agree that businesses are hurting and I know a number of them got PPP loans and the other loan is, so I, I, I get all that. But to me, that's, that's a decision the council has to make, which is.
Well, that's, that's why I'm bringing it up because it doesn't sound like we have a lot of time to make this decision. I don't know that we need to spend the whole million. But I mean, if you look at it, I think a lot of what we spend to help our businesses get their doors back open is going to come back to us in, in revenue. You know, we do have that rainy day fund that if there was a second wave, then we'd have a little bit of that covered, so.
And I think, I think from, and Brad will help me with this and Steve Smith will help me with this. There was a time where we couldn't get public funds. But I think the state auditor has said, do whatever you want to do. And so I think we could actually take this money, bring it into the city coffers and then you can decide in a month, hey, let's spend five hundred thousand dollars and develop a program. I don't think this prevents us from doing that. But I do think Brad's going to go out unless someone has some heartache over it and get that, get the money, at least the eight fifty back to us, hopefully in the next couple of months.
I a hundred percent agree that we need to go get the money. I just, let's make sure that we have the flexibility to make some decisions as a group where that money should be spent.
Okay.
Definitely, definitely. There's nothing in this that would prevent us from being able to turn around and, and pass that money along.
Okay.
I think that, you know, the headline, what you said.
Yeah.
Which, you know, I agree that the concept of we don't have to spend it all on location, all kind of thing.
Right.
That there is that recurrence and we have to do some things that we would have, that'll not really come till, you know, November, December, January.
Yeah.
Somewhere we have to say, let's get that money and get it used.
And I think, so like the county, I was on a phone call with them a week and a half ago, so talking about their, and they got four million dollars, the county did, right? Because it's based on population, so ended up at four million dollars. And they were going to spend two point four on their jail because we've got eight people in jail, not thirty-five, right? And so they're have huge, and those are COVID related issues because we're not, we can't arrest anybody that's not a felon and the felons, so literally their jail is just diving in money. So instead of giving it to the business owners, they're going to prop up their government first, the two, the two point four, two point five. I think the rest of it is going to go into a pot for businesses or most of it. Now, the issue gets to with the county sometimes is every so often, they might say, that's only going to businesses in unincorporated Chilene County as opposed to businesses throughout the county. So I had that argument with them and they didn't tell me what they were going to do with it. But I, I told them that city businesses are inside the county too. So I, I think they took care of themselves first, right? And then went to business second. Again, I'm just telling you that's what they're doing. Doesn't mean it's right or wrong. So I just, you know, we, we just, just sort of sorted it out. So I think for time's purposes, let's get the contract signed. And then if you want to bring back this discussion about what's the right amount.
As long as we get the flexibility, I agree, let's get it coming.
Okay. All right. So then I guess I would be looking for a motion then.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with Wash State Department of Commerce to receive federal CARES Act funds.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Hornby, a second by Councilmember Kulis, to authorize the mayor to sign the interagency agreement with the Washington State Department of Commerce to receive federal CARES Act funds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right.
I like your mask.
Sell a piece of property.
Life-like.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Shales, Development Project Manager. And I have a surplus property sale opportunity for you all to consider. This is part of our North Wenatchee redevelopment project. So that area we're talking about is a large vacant area behind Smitty's, east of North Wenatchee Ave, east of McKittrick intersection with North Wenatchee Ave. The specific surplus property that I'm talking about is dash line on your packet there behind what is the Velocity Insurance Group building. Properly, the property was surplus because, right, we don't need it to build North Columbia Avenue or the McKittrick Street extension. So this property, back in early February, we developed a real estate purchase and sale agreement for another interested party. They had had that now for, going on four months now or so. And they, they were non-responsive on that. And so we received new interest on this property. And so that's what I have for you here today. The lot's about ten thousand square feet. The pricing is consistent with the other real estate purchase and sale agreement and surplus property sales that we've had in this area. It's also the term that the city needs to construct North Columbia Avenue is in there by December 2021, like the others with Hooked on Toys, the Freemans and Les Schwab. The version of the REPSA in your packet does have some language about the plat alteration and a private road. That plat alteration is supposed to go forth, should be recorded at the county on Monday. And so then we can strike that language from the REPSA and clean that up. We don't need to mention that if, if it's not necessary. And so that would be a change that would happen to this REPSA between now and the mayor being able to sign it.
But you, you've given language in here that gives me the ability to have a.
Correct, yes. Correct, yeah. And so the Finance Committee is seeing this. And so, yeah, the action is that staff requested the mayor be able to sign this real estate purchase and sale agreement in substantially similar form as the attached agreement.
So what I, I'll just sort of add some thirty thousand foot context. So the buyers are, in essence, the folks that own Save Mark. And as you know, this year, they asked to lease some parking from the city. I think it was five hundred dollars a month for three months while they had the garden center going on. And I got a call from them a month or so ago and, and I don't know how garden centers work. And they just said, well, we have to order our plants right now for next year. So can we continue to lease the parking from you out in the middle of wherever that was? And I said, no, you can't because I don't know what we're going to do in a year. We might be under construction, so we won't lease it to you. But we have a piece you might be interested in buying since the guy that owns Nationwide couldn't get us back on a purchase and sell agreement. And so they said, sure. So I think a couple of days later, did they bring in a check or something? I don't know what they did.
That's what it sounds like. I wasn't in the office on that, what happened.
Sounds like they're interested. So if, if it helps with their business and helps them with the garden center and stuff that's going on, for us, it was the same price either way. I think we gave Nationwide guy four months to act and he didn't. I think with all the stuff that's going on, I think there's no reason for us not to sell it to our Save Mark family and let them have it, so.
It's the last parcel to the north of McKittrick Street.
Yeah.
The last piece of surplus property, yeah, so, yep.
And Brad thinks it's a good idea because he wants to pay back one of the interfund loans, so.
That's always a good thing.
Yeah.
And on the diagram there, that's red dot, red dot line.
Yep.
We're okay there in terms of right of way and all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Not enough Columbia Street.
Nope.
Yeah. And it's an interesting piece of property because, you know, we're giving them a little alleyway just to the north. So if you look at that little map, there's a little alleyway that'll go up and connect into Columbia Street. That was something that Les Schwab requested. So it's actually, it's a pretty neat little property because there'll be a little alleyway with the left turn lane in for Les Schwab and this fronts that and then fronts Columbia. And that little roadway that's in there, that private easement, I think goes out tomorrow. I'm signing paper sometime tomorrow, so.
You're signing tomorrow? Sounds like the other party will sign Monday.
And then Freeman's closes at the same time? That's all.
Yeah, they all, that's, yep, they all close at the same time and then, and then that's when the plat gets recorded.
So we're recording the plat and closing with Freeman on Monday. And we're going to get seven hundred thousand dollars or something on that deal. And then in a couple of weeks, we'll close this one and get two hundred and fifty. And we'll be able to start paying back.
Frank, this is Steve. You're actually going to net last in that because we're also closing a purchase of right of way Freeman's at the same time.
I don't want to hear about that. I don't want to know.
Two thousand deducted.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to sign the purchase and sell agreement then. Actually, I already signed it. I guess I won't sign the closing statements. No, it's all good. This is all working out the way we had, we had sort of, sort of planned it. And now we can turn our focus to the other side of the street. And then hopefully an info grant that we're supposed to know about between now and Wednesday, so. Yeah. So keep your fingers crossed. All right. So I entertain a motion if we had one?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign the real estate purchase and sale agreement with Two Brothers LLC in substantially similar form as the attached agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor to negotiate and sign the real estate purchase and sell agreement with Two Bros LLC in substantially similar form as attached to this agreement. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thanks, Matt. All right. Jessica, come on up. And Rob? So for those of you who are not on the Finance Committee, so Jessica, you guys remember, I forgot his name now.
John.
John Ricardi. John moved on to the P D. And so then Rob has reorganized the Public Works. And so Jessica is now, I won't say the Assistant Public Works Director, that's not the right title.
She's, she's now the Public Works Deputy Director over utilities.
Congratulations.
So Jessica's running all the utilities now, water, storm, sewer, all that sort of stuff, so. He's excited to have her there and she's been doing it for a couple of months anyhow, I think. So maybe she'll get paid accordingly now, but.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyhow, congratulations and let's talk a little bit of sewer stuff.
She's probably tired of me, but I, when I talked to the mayor about this, it was really only under the guise that if Jessica was willing to take this on, because there's really only one person I felt in this, in, in Public Works that could do this job. She wavered at first, but then.
Is it because of you?
Yeah. I said it comes with more hours and less pay. She said, all right, I'm in. But anyway, she's, she, I've worked, as you know, I've worked in Public Works for over thirty-three years. I've worked on a lot of great people. She's, she's got what it takes. There's no doubt in my mind, she's going to be super successful.
Thank you, Rob.
Good. Well, welcome, Jessica.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And yes, thank you. I'm so grateful for this opportunity. I love working here at the city. Been here eighteen years and so excited to just keep going and growing here, so. Very good. Thank you, Rob.
While Jessica gets her PowerPoint open on this subject, I wanted to quickly kind of give you an overview. So we're talking, talking about connection fees tonight. And we're trying to clean up the code and make it a little bit simpler to understand and easier to administer for staff and for our customers. But as Councilmember Kulis pointed out today in the Finance Committee, the purpose of connection fees are for the people that connect to the sewer, water and storm system to pay their fair share, to buy their equity in the system. So those of us that are on the sewer system now, we own a piece of that. So when, when our house was connected, we, we paid for that. So we have, Wenatchee, we have two. So we have, Wenatchee, we have two connection fees. We have a system facility fee, and that fee is buying equity into our system that treats the sewer. So think of it as buying a piece of the treatment plant. That fee is based on how much sewer you're going to put into the system. So the more sewer you discharge, the more your fee is, and that's because our treatment plant has to be built to accommodate the growth that could occur in Wenatchee. The other fee that Jessica will talk about is our local fee, and that buys your equity in the sewer in your street, and so that's what we call our local fee. And so when your house was connected, you own a piece of that sewer out there, and that is a, that fee is a flat fee, or what we're proposing to change to a flat fee throughout all of Wenatchee. And then we also have a little surcharge in Sunny Slope, which Jessica will talk about. But I wanted to set the stage there, so you're paying for this, your investment in the treatment plant, and that's based on how much you put in, and then you're paying for our industry. And it's, Jessica and I talked about this, and I get cross-eyed, and I'm saying, if I'm getting cross-eyed, you know, I want to make sure the council, I try to break it down just into those simple little points, so go ahead.
Well said, Rob, thank you. So before we dive into what we're proposing in this code tonight, I just wanted to remind everybody where we've been. So back in 2017, we had this great effort, we came up with a big sewer comprehensive plan, and launched our new sewer extension program to expand sewer into areas of the city that were missing sewer mains, and as well as out into the county area. So at that time, as Rob mentioned, we developed two new charges for local facilities. One was the local facilities charge, and that was for anyone that was hooking up to a city-built main, and the second one was for the Sunny Slope folks, because we were having to do a bunch of upgrades, a new transmission line, lift station improvements, force main assessment, and possibly redundant force main, to get all of that sewer back across the river into the treatment plant. So those fees were established, and you'll see at the bottom kind of where we started with those fees in 2017. Couple other key pieces, and these aren't changing, I just wanted to remind everybody that these things are out here, that we do offer a 30% discount for the local facilities charge and the Sunny Slope local facilities charge. So that's a pretty great deal for those folks in Sunny Slope, really trying to incentivize getting them hooked up to sewer. And that's only temporary, though, it only lasts two years from the time we complete the project. So for example, Elmwood, that was our very first extension as part of the sewer extension program that was completed in the fall of 2017. Their discount has expired, so for those folks, they're paying the full price, and we've done our best to, as staff, reach out to folks, let them know from day one, "Hey, you're going to get this discount. By the way, your discount's expiring, if you want to come in and take advantage of this." And we always get a few that trickle in when we remind them that they're going to miss out on this discount. The other piece that's built into this is a 1% increase. So you'll see what I'm proposing tonight of where we're starting now with these fees, there's a slight increase, and that's that 1% that we've increased the fees every year since this was adopted in 2017. The other thing in 2017 that was big is we updated that system investment fee and raised it to $1,500, and as Rob mentioned, that system investment fee is what pays for the wastewater treatment plant, and some people buy into that. All of these fees are for capital projects, so when we make changes to them, it mostly impacts our capital funding, not necessarily our rates, which is more of our bread and butter, paying our operations and maintenance costs. And it's tough to really rely on these fees, because they do fluctuate. Like this year, we're probably not going to see as much of these fees coming in, but in previous years, when the economy's going great and we see lots of new development, then we're going to see more of these fees. So they do vary. The other thing that we did that so far has appeared to be quite successful is we revised the system investment fee structure for multifamily. They used to pay per unit, just a slightly reduced rate from a single family, which led to pretty high fees if you're talking about a large apartment complex. We revised that, so they only pay that based on their water meter, which is a significant reduction, and you'll see later, I'll show you some examples of how that's played out, and I think it's evident in the number of apartment complexes and multifamily that we're seeing going up in the community. All of these fees at this point in time are based on the water meter size, and that has led to some trouble, which is why we're here tonight to propose an alternative to you guys. So we'll talk first about the local facilities charge. Again, this is that fee that pays for the pipe in front of your house when you hook up to sewer. We had a previous program called frontage fees, which was much the same thing, but it was, it had its issues as well. And again, this only applies to folks connecting to those city-built mains. The problem with having the local facilities charge based on the water meter is that it was, if someone came in and changed their water meter size or redeveloped, we had to reassess those fees for that change in use to the property. And this was somewhat unexpected, because frontage fees had been a flat fee. They only were paid once, and once you were done, you moved on. Any future redevelopment typically never pays frontage fees again. So this method of using the water meter as a basis for developing these fees, it's okay, I mean, it's allowed, we can choose to base fees however we want, but it does lead to this trouble with redevelopment, that, hey, we're hitting them for more money when they come back in, and a lot of times, you know, what we're seeing is people had like a lot with a single family, and they wanted to go and put in multifamily, and so they were getting dinged with these extra redevelopment costs. The other part was, too, is that because we had to go back, especially in downtown, figure out who built the main, well, some of our mains are almost 100 years old, and so for staff, that was a lot of added research to try and figure out, you know, when did they connect? Did the city build the main? And so it was challenging, and there was some things where it was sometimes hard to tell, and that made it even harder to try and charge fees when we really want to be confident when we charge these fees. We don't want to have to guess at that. So what we're proposing is kind of two parts here. The current fee, there would be no change to the local facilities charge fee, it would remain where it's at, which is the 2017 rate, incrementally increased 1% a year since then, and then the Sunny Slope surcharge would stay the same. But what we are proposing for both fees, rather than have them based on the water meter, we would have them based on the parcel. So once you paid it for that parcel, we wouldn't ask you again to ever come back and pay that, it would be done, we'd move on. It'd make it a lot easier, too, because if a parcel is already connected to sewer, we assume that they've already paid it at some point in time. They paid a frontage fee, they paid a facilities charge, we're moving on. It also helps clean things up in Sunny Slope, because being out in the county, we're not always aware of changes of use, especially the smaller ones, if people upsize the meter, that's a beauty water service area, so there's also some challenges, and this makes it a little bit easier, because we can keep track that they've paid for that parcel. We're also proposing an increase to the system investment fee to bring it to the amount that was calculated in 2017. So in 2017, we looked at the city's assets of the treatment plant and future capital projects, and came up with a system investment fee of 3,710. We raised the system investment fee a little bit to 1,500, but we didn't take it all the way up to what was proposed in 2017. So with the reduction, and we'll show you in a minute some of the reductions to connection fees by changing how we base the fee for the local facilities charge and Sunny Slope surcharge, we're recommending that the system investment fee come back up to that 2017 proposed rate. We would continue to charge a system investment fee based on the water meter, that's pretty standard, because it's based on the capacity of the treatment plant, which is really very important, tied to, if you're changing a single-family house out to a large multifamily, definitely going to have a much bigger impact on the amount of wastewater we see coming into the treatment plant. So this was in the back of your packet, and it just shows kind of currently if these types of development were coming in, what each of the charges would be. Now, the tricky part of this, that our staff at Public Works does a great job of, is, you know, it depends on where you're at, depends on if there's a city-built main, what of these fees apply, and I've noted, too, that for these examples, I noted the meter sizes, and of course, as you can see, as meter sizes increase, there's increasing fees. But by changing the local facilities charge and Sunny Slope facility charge to flat fees, that dramatically reduces some of those costs for some of the bigger meters. So one other note about Sunny Slope local facilities charge on this map, you'll see where those fees are applied. We don't quite yet have sewer in all of this area. In fact, primarily, there's only sewer through the main roads of Chatham Hill, but not all the side streets. It heads out the highway and picks up some of the new subdivisions off of Easy Street, and then there's a small bit of sewer that goes up Easy Street at the intersection of Highway 2 and Easy Street. But beyond that, we haven't gotten quite to all the rest of those projects. So most of the Sunny Slope local facilities charges that we're seeing are coming from residential. So here's some examples of single family. So of course, Chatham Hill that I just mentioned, they get all three, so they get the local facilities charge, the Sunny Slope surcharge, the system investment fee, for a total of Elmwood, of course, that's inside the city, and we built that sewer, so they don't have to pay the Sunny Slope charge, so they're slightly less. Lavender Court, that's an example of a county development that's off the new sewer transmission line, so they're out in Sunny Slope, so they get the Sunny Slope surcharge and system investment fee, but because the developer extended the main, they do not pay the local facilities charge. And then a couple of examples of developments here in town, such as Beacons Field and Pine Shadow up off of Spring Water. These are examples of inside the city where the developer extended the main, and so they're not in Sunny Slope, so they would pay just that system investment fee.
Just a question on that one. Didn't we pay the developer to extend the main on that one?
So.
Like Payne Shadow?
You're right, Keith. This one was kind of in the transition phase, it happened right before we started our sewer extension program, and so they actually did a frontage fee agreement. So the development paid for the city to extend the main, transmission main, but then the developer paid to take it off of that transmission main into the new roads that were part of the development. So because those tabs are off of that new main that the developer built inside the development, they don't pay the local facilities charge. But you're right, the developer did pay what we call more frontage fees, and there are a few of those old agreements lingering out there that are addressed by code. We recognize that there's some people out there that we said, "You're not part of this program." It actually is probably less to their benefit to not be part of the sewer extension program, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And I just wanted to note at the bottom here, these numbers are based on our facilities and the needs at our facilities, that's where these numbers come from, is an analysis of our system. So it's sometimes hard to compare ourselves to other people, because everybody has different types of plants, different capital needs, but just to show that we're in the ballpark, Douglas County in 2018 was charging 5,448 for a single-family connection. So a couple other examples, these are some commercial comparisons of where we're at today and what would happen. So a car lot turns into a bank, and they upsize their water meter with the local facilities charge, the way it is now, based on the water meter, that's an extra $7,000. But the proposal is, is that since that property was already a car lot that had a connection to sewer, we would not recharge them again, the difference for being hooked up to sewer. But they would pay a system investment fee, because the bigger the meter, the more water they could potentially discharge, and the bigger impact they could have on our wastewater treatment plant. So you'll see, you know, for a lot of these redevelopment, it actually does help reduce some of the costs for connecting to sewer. And then the last one is multifamily, and this one's kind of fun to note, I know Douglas County Sewer wasn't very happy with us about some of our changes about adopting the sewer rates based on the water meter rather than on the number of units, because they still base on the number of units. And so for Douglas County, for a comparable multifamily, it would be about $500,000 to connect to sewer, and so even with our local facilities charges and things, we're still, which probably explains why we have a lot of multifamily.
But when you look at the difference, the price of our land is still more expensive than theirs, so when you're a developer, it might just sort of wash. I don't know what those guys are paying over there in Douglas County for dirt, but I'm assuming our dirt's a little bit more expensive.
Yeah, so. So that's all I have for you. There's some other, does anybody have any questions about the fees? Those are kind of the big, big changes. There are some other changes that we're proposing. We're increasing our permit fee from $40 to $100, and that pays for staff to work with the customer, collect the permit, inspect the connections, and we've added an option for folks to share a lateral with an agreement, a joint-use agreement, and some other minor changes, just to make our code more consistent or clarify different issues in the code.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I just, I appreciate the streamlining and looking how that when investors come in, they know what the picture is, and the picture doesn't change, and it simplifies that, so I appreciate that approach.
Second, I'll second that, it looks much cleaned up. Thanks for your hard work. Yeah, and I have the appreciation that staff is continually looking at this stuff and vetting it, and where things raise questions, you come back and we massage it. That, and that we're very regular with our rate studies, so that we're not 10 years out and be artificially low, and then all of a sudden have this huge makeup that everyone has to program into their budgets.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, good job.
Thank you.
All right, if there's any questions for Jessica, I'd entertain a motion. Your Honor, I'd make a motion that the city council adopt ordinance number 2020-13, amending Chapter 4.08 Sewers' Rates and Charges of the Wenatchee City Code. Second. Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt ordinance number 2020-13, amending Chapter 4.08 Sewers' Rates and Charges of the Wenatchee City Code. Any discussion? Hear ye none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob and Jessica, both of you. So I do not know who's going to virtually attend the AWC meetings. I think it's all virtual now, isn't it?
Yes.
So who's attending and who needs to be voting members?
And I am. Does anyone else register?
I haven't registered yet, but I'm going to.
Okay, so there's three.
Anybody else want to be voting members? Or you just, you can go watch if you want online or...
But there is a general meeting where there's voting, and so we have to bring three voting representatives. So do you have any problems with Jim, Linda, and Mark?
Can I say something about these conferences?
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts at all about attending? I'm on the education committee, and they work really, really hard to make this valuable as a normal conference, so it really suggests that we have to involve them.
And so usually, these conferences are held at places, and then you get to go and you learn about government and city stuff, and they're actually pretty good. This one, obviously, was supposed to be in, where was it?
I think so.
Uh, Cadillac.
Cadillac, okay. And then, so obviously postponed because of COVID, but they're still having the conference, so it's all online and...
What's the date on that?
It's usually in June sometimes, isn't it?
It's in two weeks.
30th week.
Yeah.
20.
Week, 20.
23rd.
Yeah.
23rd, 24th.
Three days, that's the beginning of a new project.
All right, so I guess we'd entertain a motion to have Mark and Jim and Linda appointed, if someone wants to make that motion. Maybe shouldn't be one of those other ones.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for Linda Harold, Jim Bailey, and Mark Kulas to be the voting members at the AWC conference.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Asparza, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolution 2020-20, appointing Linda Harold, Jim Bailey, and Mark Kulas as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington City's Annual Conference Business Meeting. Discussion? Hear ye none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Mayor's report, I don't even know where to start. I think mostly what we should probably talk about are sort of the events of the last couple of weeks, and I'll just give you some of my thoughts, and I think there's obviously been some protesting in town. I think the biggest event was last Saturday evening. Chief and Edgar had a great plan put together, generally on a Saturday night, we'll probably have five officers, we had 15 on Saturday night, not all ours, we hired some from East Ranch, I think, Shland County Sheriff's Office. I think mostly for two parts of it, I think one is knowing that there was going to be some protesting going on, I don't know what you want to call it. Protest is probably not the right term.
Demonstration.
Demonstration. But also, the seniors were doing the cruising, and we really wanted to make sure that we had a presence for that event as well. So your police department did an excellent job, as always, executed the plan beautifully. There obviously was, I would say, on both sides of the arena, there was, you know, I'm learning my urban dictionary pretty good, so learned what F-12 was and knew the other ones, and there's, you know, signs to defund the police department, some of that, and I think on the other side, quite frankly, the stuff that Mr. Riggs was talking about, there was a number of people in downtown Wenatchee with assault rifles, in the back of pickups, and in downtown Wenatchee, and so we had both of those. I think there was a number of people that were uncomfortable with, felt intimidated, I think, a little bit by the assault rifles. And so, as you've seen, you've all got a bunch of emails over the last week or so. Again, I think the ones who said that the Wenatchee Police Department weren't present, again, I find those, may not have seen them right in front of you when you needed them, but they were all over the place doing the great work that they did. So, I haven't quite, I'm sort of going back and forth. Laura and I are discussing, obviously, lots of people have said lots of things over the last two or three weeks about the events in Minnesota, and we've seen a lot of stuff going on in Seattle and Bellevue and Olympia and Renton, and, you know, knock on linoleum that nothing's happened so far in our town, that demonstrations have been very peaceful. So, just trying to sort out what the city's response to that should or shouldn't be. As Councilmember Kulas and I talked offline a little bit, I, sometimes you just don't say anything, and then sometimes there's a time to come out and say something. And so, sort of thinking that maybe that time is coming soon. So, Laura's been working on some stuff, and I don't know if you guys have any thoughts about that. It's just been a real interesting time. I think some of this is brought up, the fact that everyone's home with the COVID stuff, and I think they're sort of pent up and watching lots of stuff, and it's just an interesting time. And so, I've not been sleeping well. I, again, our response was spot-on, and our guys did a great job. They continue to do a great job. So, just again, I have not been responding to all of the emails. I just, there's some stuff that I just can't respond to. A number of people said, "Mayor, why weren't you there?" Well, I was there. I was on my bicycle. I was wearing my bike helmet and my glasses and my little padded seat, and because I didn't feel like I wanted to be, I thought that was my role. I don't think my role was to carry a sign. I thought my goal was to watch, or that's what I should be doing. So, anyhow, it's just an interesting time. I don't know if you have any comments. I really am not prepared to really do anything right now, other than offline, if you're thinking about something, or if you want to call me and give me some direction on what you think we ought to be doing.
I'll just give you a comment. I think, I think you are taking the right approach. You're staying neutral. I think the statement you made to the news media was spot-on.
No, thank you.
And I echo that.
I'll agree with that. Yeah, it's, and again, it's not easy on either side, right? And, I just wanted you to know that we're sort of working on that, and I'll keep you posted. If you have something, and Linda, thanks for the email to the officers, and I think hopefully they're hanging in there pretty good, and...
I'm very glad. They are.
Yeah. Yeah, they did a fantastic job.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask Chief if he has any updates. I know I'd kind of talked to him a little bit, and he was going to reach out to the groups, and have you had a chance to do that, or where are you feeling at?
Come on up, Chief.
Sorry to put you on the spotlight.
And for those of you that don't know, you know, Chief and Edgar walked with demonstrators on Saturday, so...
We didn't go the full route, to be fair. But it was some interesting conversations, for sure. Yeah, just a little bit of an update. There is another march scheduled for tomorrow night, just like the other ones. We've reached out to the organizers. We wanted to kind of get an idea of what the route looks like, number of people, specifically the group. It looks like it's going to occur around 5:00 tomorrow evening. They're trying to keep it a little bit quieter than they have in the past. They had some unusual occurrences, I think, that occurred the week leading up to Saturday's demonstration. There were some reports of some shenanigans with some folks around town, and a lot of social media garbage that was out there. So, people were probably more highly sensitive, looking at the events nationwide and not necessarily in our backyard. We've approached this from the standpoint that local people are going to protest or demonstrate very respectfully and not get out of control. That kind of behavior is not what we would normally expect here in Wenatchee. And so, we took that approach as not necessarily hands-off. We want to make sure that we understand everything that's going on and gather as much intel as possible leading up to the event and making the appropriate plans. It's, I think anytime that you have a demonstration like that, the last thing, at least locally, the last thing you want is to have a heavy police presence that can possibly agitate the crowd, but you always want to be prepared for what could happen. So, that was kind of the planning process that went into last Saturday and the previous ones as well. So, we're not, again, expecting anything that's going to be a raucous over tomorrow night's event. It does incorporate East Wenatchee, but they're going to end up over here in Wenatchee. So, obviously, we're putting our folks, are letting them know what the event looks like, and probably a smaller number of people than there have been in the past, because it involves quite a walk. So, not a lot of people don't really want to participate in that long of a walk. So, that's what we're kind of, we've done in the past. As far as the Second Amendment group, you know, we look at that relatively the same way, but the other pieces that obviously put people on alert was the intimidation that came along with it, and I don't think that is Wenatchee. That is not what we normally expect out of our folks. But, again, that is a constitutionally protected right, and you have to be somewhat neutral in that. Obviously, if it had escalated to something else, we have city ordinances, we have state law against brandishing firearms. So, that's the approach we kind of took on it. I think it's a balanced approach. I think it was a smart approach, and we're going to continue with that.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You get it?
You could ask.
Sure.
At what point is, I guess, I'm very concerned about the show of force, intimidation. I may take just a quick minute to go back to the, probably the mid-'90s. There was a lot of dust-up over groups around the state that were anti-communism. There was a unit out of Yakima that was making noise, and I was, we put local folks, put together a panel discussion to talk about that, and then Convention Center, I was asked to teach and defend them. I was asked to be a part of that, Steve Blackwood, one of the judges, and so forth, people on this panel. Everything was going fine until, you know, maybe a half hour into our panel discussion, about, oh, maybe 35 or 40 folks in their blue uniforms, and there's like some striped things on their shoulders, and they weren't armed. But they all came in, and they formed a wall on the back of the room. And that was intimidating. The jackboots and the whole thing. It was little Nazi Germany 1939 stuff. And that was an interesting, interesting experience, because these guys were, they weren't carrying guns, but they were carrying like a cons and, you know, backroom stuff. So, I guess I have a concern in terms of, yeah, I, staff, and I understand, the Second Amendment law, if you had a carrying gun. But in a normal setting, visible presence of a weapon is intimidating. Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you guys carry a weapon and you confront the public, that weapon is part of your rejection of court. And so, when you have this kind of stuff going on, they're in the sidelines, they're walking with them, they're jumping in their pickups and following, that's intimidation. So, where, so that's a long story, you're out of my question. When does it become intimidation that we can act or do something? Because this, to me, this is completely unacceptable. It creates the wrong message. It creates, I didn't intend that, but I can imagine what the feeling must have been, maybe hemmed in by a bunch of, you know, whoever's, you know, they think they are. But particularly, the idea that they are, the term vigilante is that the police is incapable of protecting, and they're going to be there to do it. And if they do step out of line, and they're going to perpetrate somebody or someone, where do they cross the line? Where can we actually make some, insert ourselves into that situation? This really bothers me.
Yeah, I understand that. Generally, what the difference is, is any unslung rifle, any unholstered pistol that is directed at anybody or in a threatening manner, they could even be holding it up in the air. That is definitely communicating a threat. Driving around in your vehicle, there are laws against that. They've changed. You can't do that while you're hunting, you know? But the line, I think, that most people draw, the law clearly states that as if it's unholstered, unshouldered, and pointed in a direction. It is subjective in that it is in the eyes of the beholder, and it has to meet the standards for the law. So, there were no reports of that type of behavior to the police department. Yes, they were driving around, and the NCW life interviews were not very becoming of the individuals that were participating, sitting in the bed of a pickup truck, standing on a street corner and driving by. Yeah, that's alarming. It's something that we don't like to see, but we would have definitely taken police action if we'd seen any of those behaviors that I talked about that violate the law.
So, again, I think what I would say is if, you know, obviously, we got this thing from Riggs's, and I think, you know, we are going to meet next week in a work session, but if you guys have comments or something, or if you think I should be doing more or less than what I'm doing, just let me know. And, again, we're sort of watching things, and Chief will report. I'm not going to be around tomorrow night, but he'll report to me on how things went, and hopefully they go smoothly and we're all good. Infra grant, we're supposed to hear by next Wednesday, so we were on a conference call weeks ago tomorrow with Senator Cantwell's office, where they told us that the USDOT has basically said June 17th is their deadline for announcing, so we will know before, between now and then. I'm guessing it'll be tomorrow, or they'll announce it on Wednesday, I don't know. They've got another round of funding they're trying to get out, and so they want to get these sort of put to bed. I think we've done all we can do in terms of, we've contacted different folks. We actually, Maria Schreier was on a, or, Kim Schreier was on a phone call with New House and someone from USDOT, and so there was a community call last week that showing support for our project. So, we'll see, see how we do. I don't know. We're certainly hopeful. Laura, give me some more stuff.
That was, it was a couple of free words. I'm going to add a few more.
Okay. So, again, next week, we will talk about the downstairs building, about whether we go forward or not. The team is ready with final drawings. We'll go through the math before we go up to bid process. We did, we'll have some information from Roy Cogan, our bond counsel, because obviously we floated bonds and part of the bond proceeds. We said we were going to build a federal, build the building downstairs, so he'll have us an opinion as to what we can and can't do with the money if we decide to not move forward. So, we'll just get that all wrapped up. Staff is sort of ready to go. I think Aaron and Ellis are ready to, they think this is a good bidding climate right now, and so I think they're looking for the final approval tomorrow, so they can go out and go to bid, and that we're all on the same page and understand what we're getting into. So, that'll be a majority of next Thursdays. You guys doing any meetings at all? I know the Health District's doing a bunch. Anybody else doing stuff?
I have just a couple of things. Actually, I was recently appointed to the Association of Washington City's Legislative Steering Committee. Thank you for your support. And we do have a Zoom meeting next week. And related to that, I remind you, if you've not already done that, to go to the Association of Washington City's website, and there's a link there to participate in a survey on legislative priorities.
Okay.
And it has to be done by the end of business tomorrow. It's right on their main page. Take the survey, it takes a few minutes. I started, and I actually have to type something instead of just pressing buttons to do that, so, yeah.
And so, I'll report on the Health Board drama. You know, we opened to a 1.5, and now what we're, what we're going to do is, within like the next two, three weeks, we're going to watch the numbers closely to see if they go up, and if they don't go up, then we're going to apply for, you know...
Three?
No, level two. Level two.
So, you go to three or just two?
Two.
Just school two?
School two. You know, but it'll be interesting because of the marches that have been happening too.
Yeah.
I mean, that could potentially be, it's going to muddy up the waters as to the numbers, you know, whether they're coming because of the opening, or whether they're coming because people are gathering in large groups, so...
And I'm actually, I'm concerned about the Yakima. You know, that's a really hot spot, and Keith knows this. There's fruit going back and forth to Yakima and Wenatchee all day long, right? They're picking cherries here, and they're packing them in Yakima, or they, some people pick them in Yakima and pack them up here, and there's stuff going back and forth all the time in that places. And they had more cases in one day than we have had total in our, in Shlain County. They had 260 new positives or something one day.
Did you see the article in their paper, though, in the Yakima Herald?
Uh-uh.
So, you know, they took into consideration the factors of what's affecting the Latino community, the fact that they work in, you know, the ag business in close quarters, and they also took the factor of, you know, just living in poverty. People tend to, you know, live two, three families all in one household. But, and they did this investigation because they couldn't understand how is it that King County, how Yakima is now higher than King County? So, they said something else is happening. And it was shown that the mobility, based on your cell phone, that people are just not staying home.
Yeah.
That there's a lot of mobility going on in Yakima.
Yeah, they're just not staying home.
No.
They're just not staying home.
And it's across all cultures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but the Latino community is the highest affected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was really interesting.
Yeah.
Based on cellphone data. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Interesting.
And I, just one more pitch. Sunday is the 14th, and that is Flag Day. So, just remind everyone, Flag Day is Sunday the 14th.
All right, everybody, so thanks for being here, and let me know if you have any comments. Go ahead and call me or email me or whatever. I know you're getting emails, too, and we'll keep pushing forward. All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.